This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order and the Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Councilman Cannon is absent today. Councilman Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and the meeting is open to business. I'm going to ask David Lawson to bring the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, we're thankful for this opportunity once again for a day that we have not seen before. We ask that our minds be in order and on one accord that the decisions made will be pleasing in your sight. We will be ever grateful and thankful to give you the honor, the prayers, and the glory in your Son's Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on July 30th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of July 26 through August 1.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor?
No.
Unfinished business, A is an ordinance annexing property to the city of Gadsden. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. It annexes approximately forty acre tract on Brook Avenue. The property is known as the pump station and was purchased by the city at a tax sale. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mayor, you want to say anything about it?
I'd like to say that that pump station is a very unique building. If you've never been down there, hopefully sometime the city can develop that, this area, on the creek, beautiful area of the creek. So hopefully we can do something with it over a period of time. But we got the property at a deal, so.
Yeah, we thought about trying to clean it up, put some lights, and if nothing else just make it a place where somebody would want to go kayak and work, go put in. And you know, it's a nice little cruise down through there and you actually can go all the way out in the river from there. But it's in a flood plain, you can't do a lot of things when they're in a flood plain.
What happened to that rapids or the rowan thing?
Whitewater Rapids.
Oh, that $2 million project in Colorado?
Yeah.
I'm waiting on that $2 million.
That's what we were supposed to put down there in the deal?
I thought somebody came.
Now, that didn't come from me. That was somebody about an article in the paper in California. I didn't.
Well, somebody came before us and was going to do it. And I thought, where they going to follow through?
We had a presentation on it.
We did. We did a study on it. It was feasible, but it's, the flow, the flow of the river is not swift enough to.
It wasn't.
No.
Well, I thought they were going to pump it back.
Yeah, put some turbines in there.
Oh, yeah. It could be done, but it's cost some kind of money too. Like about a billion dollars.
Well, okay. What's another million more?
Y'all know we're just kidding up here.
We're ready to vote.
Yeah.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
B is a resolution declaring August 6 as a national voting rights day. The resolution was presented for new business last week but failed to receive unanimous consent. It expresses the city's strong support for voting rights by declaring August 6 as National Voting Rights Day on 2013 and succeeding years. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I was the one who held it up on unanimous consent last week, and I will be voting no again this week. But I primarily am voting because, that way, because I think it's sending a message that I disagree with, the intent and the wording of the resolution.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Roll call vote, please.
All right. This is the motion to adopt the resolution. Councilman Harris?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Eccles?
No.
Stewart?
No.
Reed?
No.
The resolution is not adopted. The vote is three to three, so we do not have the votes to adopt.
Now, this is a time and place as it has to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance to own property located at 206 Carrollon Lane in District 2. State of Alabama, Lula Jane, Amos Freeman, Florence, Bay, Manus, Stettina, being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Builder Department. We started this case in April of 2011. There have been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve. And we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Well, Brian, you're pretty sharp today. You were going to be on TV a lot of times, so you decided you dress up or what?
It's what my wife got.
And looking good.
Yeah, it's a ton when you said that.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Have we got a motion and a second?
Not yet.
No.
Well, is anyone wish to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 104 Morningview Court in District 2. Dotsey L. Hill being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair?
Mr. President, we started this case in November of 2011. There have been no improvements. There are no active permits to improve. And we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is that true?
No, it's never.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
We don't have a motion.
Okay, the chair entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
11, the next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1003 Randall Street in District 5. Lynn Mathis being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone wish to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started this case in September of last year. There have been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve. And we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1209 Capit Avenue in District 7. Ross Scott being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is anyone wish to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started this case in March of last year. There have been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve. We're asking for a resolution today to abate this nuisance.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution assessing and use of abatement lien against the property located at 1520 Lula Street in District 1. Bonita Foster being the last known owner. This is for demolition that has already been performed and the amount is $3,365. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone wish to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Moved without.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
14 is a resolution appointing member to the beautification board. This confirms the mayor's appointment of Louis Griffin for a term expiring July 31, 2016. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
15 is a resolution reappointing members to the beautification board. This confirms the reappointment of Patrice Mosley, Kathy Vineyard, Jaegel Neokam, and Erica Gray is in for terms expiring July 31, 2016. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
16 is a resolution authorizing agreement with John Sutton to perform on September 6, 2013, as part of the summer concert series, and the amount is $800. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. This will be the last concert for the summer series, Amphitheater, on September 6.
November 9 o'clock.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Is there any other discussion?
I'm sorry. There was a big turnout the other night. Had a local band, Daybreak Play. They do a good job. And it was a big crowd there.
Sure was.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
16 is a resolution authorizing agreement with John Sutton to perform.
Not New Destiny though.
New businesses, are there any new business?
No, Mr. President. The resolution that I had, we're going to table it, we're going to wait until next week and not have it introduced as new business today because we need some more clarification on it.
Okay. Any other new business? Department reports, committees, are there any? Citizens requests, Janice, Cheryl?
Mr. President, Ms. Cheryl had to go back to her business, and so I think one of the council members is going to handle her remarks for her later on in the meeting.
Okay. Remarks by the mayor and the council? Billy?
Hold him on, bro. Uh, no, I don't have any comments today. You caught me off guard. I thought you were going to start at the other end with Ben. But I have no, no comments today. Just look forward to my district meeting, which will be in two weeks now. Not next Monday, but the following Monday. Look forward to that. We plan to have someone from the mayor's office there to represent City Hall.
Okay, Ben.
I pretty well said what I want to say. I'm with Billy on that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of quick announcements. I think, again, I'm the council member that was referenced earlier when we talked about Ms. Cheryl handing off her announcement. There is a, an annual sidewalk yard and yard sale on Broad Street in downtown Gaston. They're scheduled for August 9 and 10, so that's this Friday and Saturday. Friday it's from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and then Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The intent, of course, is to draw activity to the downtown area and to draw merch, to draw consumers to that area. Also, there is a little bit of a twist to help support the students that are returning to school. Anyone that makes a purchase downtown, their purchase is going to be matched with an in-kind donation of school supplies. So I think, I thought that was a nice little twist on, on this weekend's activity. But again, it's a sidewalk and yard sale on Broad Street down, in downtown Gaston, Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. and Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Okay? And, and of course, I think each council member is being asked to pass this on to at least 10 people. And then those 10 people are being encouraged to pass the message on to an additional 10. So, so in an effort to get the word out. All right. There, we were made aware today of another community game night, and I think The Times has given this some publicity, but I'll mention it again, on Friday, August 9, at New Destiny Church in North Gaston on 201 Goldenrod Avenue at 6:00 p.m. So this is for children of all ages. It's fun, food, prizes, and all of that stuff's free, so I might show up. But again, this is Friday, August 9, at 6:00 p.m. at New Destiny Church on 201 Goldenrod Avenue.
Devin, you might want to mention that CED Mental Health is the one that's.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sponsor this.
CED Mental Health is the sponsor, and they're partnering with New Destiny Christian Church. Great model. For those of us who aren't familiar with what CED is trying to do, they're reinventing themselves. And this is a great model, I think, where you've got a nonprofit organization partnering with, with the church. So nonprofit partnering with a community organization to serve our young people. So this is, again, a good, great model and something that we hope to see more of going forward. One other announcement that I have, and this is one, again, that I'll restate from last week. This Saturday, August 10, is the ceremony to designate Megan Boulevard or Highway 31 as Martin Luther King Memorial Parkway. Again, that, the ceremony is going to be at 12:00 p.m. at the Gaston City High School Auditorium. We will have Mr. James L. Green as our speaker, who's a Gaston, Gaston native. And as, if I'm accurate in this, it's going to be, he's, he's actually a retired colonel. So it's retired Colonel James L. Green who will be our keynote speaker there. And, and of course, we'll be recognizing also some, some local individuals who, who helped, who helped to pave the way for civil rights achievements in the, in the city of Gaston. So again, Saturday, August 10, Gaston City Auditorium, 12:00 p.m. Ceremony designating MLK Memorial Parkway as, or designating Megan Boulevard and Highway 431 as MLK Memorial Parkway.
Show a sign up. Did I see a sign up?
Your sign is up.
Down there at the interstate.
Yeah, the signs are up, actually, and they'll be unveiled that morning, the morning of 10. So that's correct.
Are they covered now?
They're covered now.
They are?
They are covered now, yes. And I do want to thank publicly, I want to thank the mayor's office for, for their support. I want to thank, again, this council. There are a number of people that, that help support and participate. The engineering department, Chad, Chad Harry in particular, and just a number of people. I know I'm missing some folks. But, but again, I think it's a great achievement for the city, and we're going to make it official on Saturday. One, one last comment, and then I'll pass it on. And I'm taking up Councilman Harris's time today, so.
I guess we both have time.
Yeah, y'all, y'all bear with me here. I'm going to say this, and I, and I think people that know me, you know, kind of know my position here. But I'm going to say, say it anyway. We just, we just voted on a resolution designating August 6 as Voting Rights Day, and it didn't pass. And that's fine. That's going to happen from time to time. Things that you support won't pass. And that's every right of every member of this council to vote their, their conscience and vote where they feel like they need to be. I can tell you that, from my perspective, being a, being both African American, being relatively young, and, and I think being the benefactor of many efforts that have been engaged upon by those who came before me, I think it's important to note that, you know, people shouldn't make the mistake of discounting the hard history of racial injustice that, that has existed, both in the, in the South, in particular in the state of Alabama, and in this country. And, and one thing you have to remember is that though many of the folks who are having to hear many of the concerns raised contemporarily, when you're having to hear those now, you may not have been around when much of the damage was done. But the damage was done. And, and those issues don't go away. We're going to be dealing with racial issues in the South in particular 50 years from now. Trust me. And I hope to be around 50 years when we're dealing with it. But, you know, what we have to remember is what, what people are fighting for now is not so much the in-your-face, very obvious racism. What people are fighting for now are the covert items that serve to systematically disenfranchise poor people, women, and minorities. When you look at what was the ruling that was passed down by the Justice Department, you know, again, that's the highest court in the land. We have to respect the decision. Make no mistake about that. But we just voted on an annexation today. That annexation is pretty simple. All of us, it passed unanimously. But that annexation could have been very, very complicated, had there been dwellings on that property, had there been voters on that property. And as it stands now, we would not have had to have that annexation approved by the Justice Department. Had we voted on that same annexation this time last year, it would have had to go through Justice, Justice Department approval. People, please, make no mistake. It's, it's bigger than pre-clearance. It's a very far-reaching result as it relates to what happened when the Supreme Court struck down Section 5. So please don't discount, when you hear an African American individual who has taken objection to Section 5, understand that. Understand it. Now, you know, as African Americans, we have a responsibility to be respectful in terms of how we raise our grievances. But at the same time, please don't discount the, the, the pain and the history associated with such a ruling. And, and you have to also understand, there's a very real possibility that I wouldn't be sitting here today as an African American elected official had it not been for some of those achievements. So you're not going to get me to discount them. And you're not going to get me to pretend that we haven't realized some level of gain as it relates to the Voting Rights Act. So I want people to understand why this is an issue, why it's an important issue, and why it's not going to go away. Why it's not going to go away, and why it's something that we're going to have to continually deal with going forward. Thank you.
Mr. President, I did have one announcement. I'm sorry. I announced it upstairs, but the Edgewall, Gaston Edgewall Youth Council will meet again tomorrow at 3 o'clock here in council chambers. It is headed up by CED Mental Health, and if you, if you can participate, a lot of organizations are involved in improving activities, living conditions for our kids. So if you can, if you can make it out here, come on out and, and join in, and let's, let's grow together. Tomorrow, 3 o'clock, Wednesday, 3 o'clock here in council chambers. Thank you. I'm sorry.
I would like to announce the district meeting, District 5, that's going to be tonight, 5:30, Convention Hall, Arthur Green Room. We'll meet at 5:30 and have a little meet and greet, and then we'll have our meeting starting at 6 o'clock. Linda Jackson is the spearhead behind that meeting. She's set it up and doing, doing all the work. So anybody in District 5 would like to come out, we'll have somebody there from the police department, Jimmy Hart, the district attorney's going to be there. And so, I'd invite anybody in District 5 to come out tonight, Arthur Green Room, 5:30. Would like to comment about the voting rights thing. I have no objection to celebrating the voting rights thing. That wasn't the reason I voted against this. I, a few weeks ago, the Supreme Court struck down a position, provision in the voting rights thing that had 15 southern states held to a lot higher standard of having anything to do with voting or annexation or anything like that. You had to get pre-clearance. We were 15 states being treated differently than the rest of the country. And there's some language in this resolution that chastised the Supreme Court for that ruling. I don't, I didn't agree with that. So that's the reason I voted against it.
Robert?
Well, you know, it's very interesting that the Supreme Court ruling, you pretty much show why, a few minutes ago with our vote, as to why that provision was in the Voting Rights Act, and why the southern states were targeted. Because we have people like the three folks who are sitting to my left who voted against a voting issue. As soon as the Supreme Court struck down Section 5, which was a pre-clearance, North Carolina, South Carolina, Alabama, Mississippi, all those states he just got to talking about, immediately went into action in changing procedures as it pertains to voting. And you're right, Mr. Williams, that you wouldn't be here had it not been for the Voting Rights Act. And that's why they want to change it, so you don't be here in the future. There was only one word in here that supposedly they objected to, and that was the word "gutted." And it's obviously with, what happened here today shows that that's what they did. They gutted it. Otherwise, I think the three gentlemen sitting to my left probably, well, I'm going to leave that alone because I don't know what their, their personal thinking is. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a serious problem in this city. We have a serious problem in this state. We have a serious problem in the South and, and in this country. I was told that, you know, we can't satisfy black folk, no matter what we do. I never heard that said to a Jewish person about the Holocaust. But why all of a sudden now that black folk can't be satisfied? I never heard that said to a Jewish person about the Holocaust, but why all of a sudden now that black folk can't be satisfied? We gotta stop talking about each other. We need to start talking to each other. I think the president was right. We need to have a conversation on race real bad. I can be satisfied very easily if you do what's right. I don't have a problem being satisfied if you do what's right for people. Not necessarily for black folk, not necessarily for white folks or Jewish folks, but do what's right. All this resolution said was that we were recognizing that today, 48 years ago, the voting rights were signed into law. That's all it says. And the word "gutted" was in there because that's what happened from the Supreme Court. And it's obviously, it was gutted because look what has happened as a result of that. Obviously, probably the three guys to my left, if they could change the voting right here in this city to stop black people from voting, they probably would vote for that too.
Not so, Robert. Way, way out of line.
I said probably. Well, sometimes a dog, a hit dog always holler. I said probably these guys to my left would. I didn't call no names. I didn't say all of these guys to my left. I said probably. And, and, and I'm not gonna get into personalities with you because you speak for yourself. I mean, you, soon as I threw the brick, it hit you and you hollered. And...
Have a little faith in people doing the right thing.
I have a lot of faith in you doing a lot of things to benefit you, because when we had the process of trying to redistrict this city, you made sure that you took black folks out of your district.
That's not true. I added them.
That's not true.
I know, Robert, you don't know what you're talking about.
I'm not gonna sit here and argue with you about it.
We added quite a few blacks into my district.
What was wrong with the ones that I put in the district?
Well, you had, you had all Tuscaloosa Avenue, one thing that...
And what was wrong with that?
You rolled the whole district over.
What was wrong with that?
Nothing wrong with it.
Well, why did you object to it? Why did you object to it? You objected to it because they were black folks.
Yours was not fair. You were way out of line, and you know it.
How was I way out of line?
The way you swung the, the voting thing around.
Was, was it not equally numbered? Did it not fall in the guidelines of what the law says as for as one man, one vote? Did it not fall in that category?
It, I don't know about the numbers, what we did redistricting. You tried to get the equal number in each district.
Get yourself out of that one.
I wish you wouldn't go down this road.
Well, I wish you wouldn't challenge me when you know what I'm saying is right.
Since you're going down this road, we'll just go a little farther with it. We have about 37% black in our, our city, and they have three representatives on the city council, which I think is fair and had no problem at all. I know I worked with David in his district, making sure that it was done fairly. He wasn't happy with, with your proposal. I wasn't happy with it either, but I think we drew some fair lines.
If you put words in your mouth, Mr. Williams. Okay. But go ahead. You finished? Can I finish? Like I was saying, this is the problem we have, and it's obviously a major problem. Like I said, once we start talking to each other and not start talking at each other or about each other, we might be able to accomplish a lot of things.
Thank you.
It, it, it's a sad day for this city. It's a sad day for this country. And Mr. Williams, you're correct. I was here. I mean, I participated. I understand. And, and again, like I said, I, I know some of these gentlemen to my left have friends who are Jewish, but I never heard them tell their Jewish friends that we can't satisfy you, or you need to shut up talking about the Holocaust. And so I resent that to the highest degree, that I can't be satisfied. And I just want to let the public know that I resent those statements. And hopefully, one day, we can come together in this city and, and work together. And, and don't worry about whether a person is black or white, but worry about what a person can contribute to the community and the betterment of this community. And again, it shouldn't be based on race. It should be based on the fact that this is an individual who can contribute. I, I'm surprised at some of my council members, and, and hopefully, one of these days, they'll, they'll realize the mistakes that they made. That's all I have.
Mr. President, could I just... What, Alabama gets all? Am I being recognized?
Yeah.
I think everybody up here is an American. Everybody on this panel up here is an American, period. I don't care what color you are. Can't bring religion into it, but red and yellow, black and white. I don't care what it is. We're Americans, period. I never fought anybody that wasn't one. I mean, excuse me, the only people I ever fought were not Americans, hopefully. And I agree with some of what y'all are saying over there. But there were 10 sentences in this resolution, Robert. 10 sentences, and I disagreed with three of them. And I, I didn't know who wrote it. I asked. It had to be a partisan person or group that wrote it, because it was insulting to a point. The intent and the wording was absolutely atrocious against putting a resolution out from the city of Gaston in that form in partisan view. And that's why I voted against it. I think everybody ought to vote. I vote every time we have an election. Because I've been there, done that, and I'm gonna vote. That's my right. It's my privilege and my intent. But not, not three sentences in here to berate the Voting Act. And it did berate it, and it berated the Supreme Court, who I didn't agree sometime with Supreme Court. But it's just one of those things.
But Mr. Reed, I ask you to come up with a resolution that still recognize this as the voting, signing of the Voting Rights Day and present it. So you had an opportunity to take those three sentences out and whatever, substitute them and bring it back before the council.
We talked about it, and I knew you were gonna say that. That's no problem with me, and I'm not, I'm not gonna sit here and argue with you about it.
We're not gonna argue.
I'm gonna stand on the, on the same right that I've always had. We're all Americans. We're citizens of the United States of America, and we ought to start acting like it. We ought to start acting like it. I heard somebody say, "Man, to go." It's about time we did. Why in heaven's name do we keep bringing up things that divide us? I can't understand that. I heard, "Man, to go." It's gonna last another dead blame 50 years. That's ridiculous. We've had 50 years to get it right. We finally get it wiped out, and now somebody tells me it's gonna last 50 more years and will buy me some more guns. That's stupid. That is absolute stupidity.
Well...
Now, if it's gonna last 50 more years, I gotta change all my plans.
Let me, let me, Mr. Echo, I've gotta respond to this, and then we can be...
That's it.
No, we're not through.
Well, okay, you wanna say something, okay.
I thought maybe I could say something.
You can. I'll let you say something to that. It's, it's, it's not over with, Mr. Reed.
Well, I would hope it would be.
When, when, when the state of Alabama and all other states start changing the voting laws as soon as the Supreme Court struck that down, why would you start instituting different changes in the voting procedure? For instance, in North Carolina and places like that, where they vote on Sundays, they had early voting. They're cutting down their early voting. They're stopping the voting on Sundays. And when, and history has shown that those early voters are minorities, are black people. The Sunday voters are black people. So why would you shut those out if it has nothing to do with race or has nothing to do with blacks voting? Come on, let's be for real now. When you target voter ID, that you gotta have a state-issued ID. I know of soldiers who've gone to Iraq, Iran, and other places who have died. You know of soldiers. So those people over there could have the right to go vote. I guarantee you the people in Iraq and Iran don't have to have state-issued, pictured ID to vote. But yet those same soldiers who've gone over there and lost limbs, families who've lost their soldiers have to produce pictured ID in this country to vote. There's something wrong with that picture. You can't tell me that's good, that's a good thing. There's no way you can tell me that. And why is it that certain states, southern states, are instituting pictured issued ID by the government if it's not to discriminate?
Well, over there, they, they use the ink system. They dump their finger in the ink, and when they come out, they can't vote again. That's the big thing. 'Cause we had people that said to vote it four, five times. It's hard to vote in Iran when you got your fingers covered in black ink.
I'll stick my finger in ink right here in America.
That means you don't vote for one time.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Let me make a little comment.
How about me making a comment? Everybody else made a comment. You're out of order.
Just a very good comment.
I, you can, you can speak after I do.
All right.
I'm old enough that I remember I paid poll tax. And there's probably not many people in this room that did that. And that was done, just like what Robert said. The poor people, back then, the Afro-Americans were a lot less in the economy than they are today. And therefore, they couldn't afford $2.00. That may be all they made that day. I can remember that, too. So I can understand why. But this particular thing, after 48 years, I'm hoping that he's gonna be wrong. May not be and probably won't be. There's always people out there who don't wanna do what's right. I was chairman of the Democratic Executive Committee for I don't know how many years. We had a lot of elections. I never had one challenge except one time, and they never could find anything wrong with that one. I hope we're gonna give it a chance. If we won't give it a chance, and we still do the things that Robert's sure it's going to happen, then I'd be for going back and doing the thing. But I, I would hope that someday we will be able to, as we would say, not make any difference what the color or race or whatever. Because even now, you know, we, we still separate. And if you're talking about the Jewish, the Jewish people do the same thing. But until we can socialize together and, and respect a person for what they are, it's never gonna be any different. So I'm asking the good Lord to help us this time and, and make it right if it's not right. Okay, Bill?
I'd just like to say that the, the voting fraud that takes place doesn't take place at the polls. It's, it's the absentee ballots that comes in. That's where all your fraud usually comes from. I know one county in Alabama had more absentee ballots than they had registered voters in an election. Ridiculous. And that should be cleaned up. We've got one lady here in Edgewall County who votes about 30 times every election. I've, I've talked with Robert about that. He said, "That's fine." Had no problem with it. That's where your fraud is, in voting. So it ought to be monitored more than this. But anyway, getting back to this, if you feel like you've been mistreated in the polls, there's no reason you still can't file federal lawsuits and correct things. If somebody does something wrong, then you, you still got a recourse. This didn't take the recourse away.
And, and I told you it was fine for somebody to vote 30 times?
He said, "Okay."
I did? Oh, okay. Do I know the lady?
Yeah, you know her well.
Mr. President, may I?
No, wait a minute.
No, no, really.
No, 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 sir. I'm not gonna let him get by with that. He ain't gonna sit here and lie on me like that. He gonna tell me who the lady is, and then he gonna, publicly, since he said it publicly, I wanna know who the lady is and when I agreed to that.
We can't name names up here. Mr. President, I'm hungry. Can I go eat? Can I leave?
Yeah, but I'm not gonna sit here and let him lie on me like that.
You said there wasn't anything wrong with it when I brought it up.
Mr. President, was I recognized?
They don't want this to get any further than what it is. It's getting to be bad. This meeting is adjourned.